I was like looking for trees here normally back around the bit.
It is, I looked, I should, it's good on there, did you get my text? So my pen.
Did I? No, but I have Instagram. I'm just joking.
All right, if we could call the meeting of the Oud City Council for September eighth, six thirty to four, Matt and Clark roll all these.
Abernathy?
Yeah.
Everson?
Here.
Keelish?
Here.
Noon?
Here.
Tyner?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Here.
All right, we could stand this by my allegiance followed by a prayer, Councilor Keelish, you do lead this prayer.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for bringing us here today, thank you for some nice days as of late and so many this year, we appreciate these and let us enjoy them. Also, thank you for bringing these items in front of us today as we guide them, as yeah, we talk about, discuss, and guide the future of Elwood in your name we pray.
Moving down the agenda for the common council this evening, number two is public comment. If you have a public comment, please come forward, stick your name and order of business to be drafted, heard by the council.
Robert Mullins, I think you guys shit out the handbook because this town should be ran as like a business, not allowing city employees to waste taxpayers' money driving around all the time, driving vehicles to the store, driving to go out to eat to Muncie, driving to their family member's house, all that, you guys keep letting it happen, and that's a waste of taxpayers' money, you guys say that your budget's tight, cut that out. If somebody is on the clock, they start, they clock in, they clock out for lunch, they drive their own vehicle, they clock back in for work, work's over, they drive their own vehicle home, not taxpayers paying for it.
So, Mr. Mullins, did you not talk to the secretary of this morning?
Yes, I did.
And then she told you that we're going to be working on policies?
Yes, and I told her I was thinking about coming up here, and you guys got to know that that's a waste of money, and more likely when that truck was in Muncie eating at the Outback Steakhouse, there was probably someone in that truck that's not an employee of the city, that puts a city liable if that truck was in accident for a lawsuit. That should not be allowed, if there's reason to go somewhere, that's fine, deer in money through Friday, go there back, that's it, so just enough driving around there.
Some of the positions are just not limited to Fridays, some are twenty-four seven?
There is no twenty-four seven.
I disagree with you.
I disagreed with that because.
Do you know what some of the departments do, do you know what the parks owner did, were you out there for the ninety hours you worked at the glass festival, are you out there the eighty-five or seventy hours a week that he works when he's streaming Christmas lights, I mean, he's twenty-four seven, he lives on the park property, what are you going to do if someone comes to his house at nine o'clock at night and has an emergency or needs something done at one of the parks to be timed, oh, wait till eight o'clock in the morning, we don't do that, we are departments.
So you're telling me it's okay for him to drive to Muncie?
And I'm arguing.
Drive to his dad's house at nine o'clock at night.
And we're not going to discuss personnel issues, but I'm telling you, he's on the clock twenty-four seven.
He might be, you might call it twenty-four seven, but if it's twenty-four seven, then why is he across the street at his dad's house, eleven o'clock in the afternoon, one o'clock or two o'clock, if he's supposed to be at the park working or, or using city equipment to mow his dad's yard, and somebody here, I don't know who, says, says, well, his dad's mower didn't work, I have picture to prove that's wrong, that is a straight-up lie from someone in the city, here, or somebody, him lying to you. I have proof of that, I have proof, video, I've shared.
Yeah, I'm worried.
When he drives over there home.
And that happened one time?
Twice.
And Mr. Mullins, you let me know what happened and it hasn't happened since, is that correct?
Of course, I know, I'm not.
That's correct, so that was several months ago.
But still, that's still.
So you pointed out the problem.
Private city vehicle driving around on private property doing a U-turn and parking on that property, that's your boy too.
Okay, but you addressed, you identified the problem, and then I talked to him and it stopped immediately.
Or not going on other people's property doing U-turns.
It wasn't your property.
It's still the matter. He shouldn't be on somebody's property.
The Masonic law, you didn't say a word about it.
Still the matter, you're allowing a problem to continue because you don't make rules of, have a handbook of states.
Did we just, did you, were you not told this morning that we were going to work on policy like that?
It don't mean you are.
Oh, so we're just going.
No, I know, you can laugh all you want.
Well, I am.
But I'm telling you that this stupid that you guys can't create a budget, and you say your budget is tight, and you're having issues, cut that out. Why would I see, why would I see a city vehicle sitting at Needlers? Why do I see a city vehicle every once in a while set at the Dollar Store? The only place I can think in town to stop that business is possibly Tops, because it might be something here that you need there, not going grocery shopping.
Can you explain why do I get Needlers?
What vehicle do you see at Needlers?
I can tell you where at Needlers, they actually test the water there every single day, even on Saturdays and Sundays.
Same thing with Giggo, same with the case, they go to these waterparking task tests seven days a week, they were at Speedway, Gas America, seven o'clock in the morning.
Next time I see one of your employees on the clock walking out there, I'm going to take pictures of them carrying bags out.
That's fine.
And then you can make a decision, which you should be doing, writing them up for firing, because they're working on the clock, but they're out shopping. And they shouldn't be driving private vehicle or public vehicles going shopping.
And some of those departments are on call twenty-four seven, so they have to have their vehicles assessed.
If they're on call twenty-four seven, they can drive five minutes to drive to the vehicle that's on city property and then go, that wouldn't be that big, what, or three miles long?
I do want to tell you Dollar General, we do have a cart for there, that some items do come from there, and Needlers, that might have been hot dog burns, I just thought about that with the park.
And when it's hot, I boil my water for our street employees.
Mr. Mullins, I was at home last night, and I'm a twenty-four seven employee, and I was called out to a resident last night and spent an hour in town, so we do, I don't drive that vehicle any other time except when I'm called out, but I do have my vehicle at home, and if it's a need for me to get to a house, when the fire department's calling me, stopping here in the back parking lot for five or ten minutes to drive to that house, does it get me to that house where I need to be?
I'm just saying, you see the city vehicles being used for other things.
And now we said we're going to work on a policy, do we do like mileage logs now?
You know, I understand you got the, I hear there's, see the police department, boy, I understand, they pay for their gas to drive the cars out.
That is correct.
Okay, I see that, because if there's an emergency, you need them here, not driving a private vehicle, because probably not all of them live here, I don't know, private vehicle, they'll never get here, because everybody thinks they're in that driveway wreck, I see that, anything else, I don't see, I don't see them using a city car to go to lunch tonight, drive your own car, because the taxpayers are paying for them vehicles, which that means if any of you or all of you are in the city, let me sure paying for them too, but I'm still one of them, and I have a right to the point.
Do we know?
I would like to know when you guys and what changes you do make, how do I find out?
We'll let you know.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment? No other public comment this evening, we will look at agenda number three, it's the new tax abatement for D and D capital, I believe we have representatives from D and D and the unions, if you'd like to come forward, please, Mr. Savage, would you like to come forward as well?
I told Tyler we'd call me up. We'll start off, we did a site visit, tax payment committee, visited thirteen forty-nine South B Street, the apartments, the building, all the work looked really good, it's looking, I mean, it's well worth the investment that they made in the project, so basically Sam was there, and that's kind of what I wondered for, Tyler, I want to say, we think about how, what it did, what it looked like when he first started, I don't know.
You know, what I want to say about D and D and their investments in the city is, they continue to save buildings, you know, the Collier Building was a property that we were looking to purchase, it was going to be a parking lot, and Tyler and David and his team came in and said, hey, we have a vision for this, we have something that we think will work, and we pulled the reins on what we were looking at doing, and Tyler and David and his team came in and saved the Collier Building, turned it into the three-one-seven lot, lots, it's a beautiful building, fully occupied, I take it?
Yeah, fully occupied, we're working on the frontage with our office and a coffee slash dough shop.
The second building was the Salvation Army Building that we're referred to now, that's on South B, that facility was a facility that was in despair, there was a lot of riffraff that was in there when it was time to serve warrants after board, that's where they were going, and now the facility that they have is amazing, it has really brought life back into an area that was problematic.
Yes.
If you wanted to tell the council about the investment?
Yeah, we ended up purchasing the property from a gem of Zionsville, it was, like you said, in a deportable shape, it was backed up sewage, wind is broken out, roof is leaking, I was actually quite shocked here that someone was living in the back unit, unit four in there, so we came in in full gut, we did the sewer, electrical, HVAC systems, new roof, new siding, put proper windows in, so it looked correct from the road, parking lot, signage, exterior lighting, landscaping, all works, which like everybody sees, it turned the whole area around, along with the laundry mat was rebuilt as well during the time period by a buddy of mine as well, so that whole space has just changed dramatically. And now that the corner property has been demolished, I don't, what is the plan for that, just if you don't mind me asking?
It's currently under private ownership. They're doing some brown filter remediation where I even came in and wanted them to clean up the soil because it used to be a former dry cleaning, yeah, yeah, so there is definitely some interest to do something on that corner at some point, we just got to make sure it has a clean bill environmentally before we would go in and try to require, have a developer come in.
You guys thought about a parking lot potentially?
That is one of the things, yeah.
It's got to be down.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Council, do you have any questions?
Mr. Hyatt?
Just a couple comments on this council, this one's a little bit unusual, this involves a vacant building tax deduction, which hasn't always come before this body, according to state law, that can go up to two years, and you can go up to fifty percent per year on the deduction from the increased assessed value resulting from the occupation, and so the thing is a hundred thousand dollars today, what, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five, what was that? Or two-fifths.
Two-fifths.
Two-fifths, so if the assessed value goes up, doubles on the, this is twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen resolution, if the assessed value on that one doubles, he would only have to pay, the landlord or the LLC would only have to pay real estate taxes on half of that increase, and that one only goes for up to two years, you can limit it to less, or you can go less than fifty percent, that's the maximum allowed under state law on the vacant building tax deduction. He's also applied for a separate deduction, which is the more standard one that we see quite often here in council, that's just your general real estate property tax deduction, and I want to point out a typographical error in that one, on the first warehouse paragraph, it says that the investment was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's actually two hundred and fifty thousand, in the city attorney's side, so.
Well, that, and that's what matches up with the statement of benefits, if you want to, that is, two hundred and fifty thousand on the statement of benefits, so.
And then to twenty-twenty-five fourteen, kind of bounced around a little bit, since this, although this one, the petition was filed at a timely manner, not quite timely enough to get it in front of the council in time, it does require resolution waiving irregularities on the timing, we've done this before, I think we did that most recently on Bill Mullins, thank you, last one, Noblaud, all you're doing is saying, we hear by way the fact that we're hearing this late, this is to be done in time though for it to get over to county, so that the LLC would enjoy the tax abatement next year.
And council, we've seen a couple of these Noblaud, it was one of them that was done recently, and then the Carnegie Library was another one, it passed the vacant building abatement as well, and it's saved you for so long, and Blackberry Farms came in and granted, and they put a significant investment into the library.
One last thing, on twenty-twenty-five fourteen, you will need to make a determination as part of your motion on what level of deduction you want that to be, the standard deduction that we commonly use in the past is a hundred percent year one, a duration of ten years, falling on ten percent each year, so your ten would be ten percent. You are, I don't know if we want to change that, I left that blank, but if you want the standard deduction of the motion, simply you say that.
And that's similar to how regular tax payments were provided.
Correct, although the council has a lot of discretion anymore.
Council, do you have any questions?
Okay, on that, on the twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen, make the decision on the percentages for the vacant building also.
So council, we have to make the decision on the percentages for the vacant building on twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen, so what we'll do is say.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-five thirteen.
There's a page.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-five thirteen is the vacant building, that one can be done first, and you don't have to waive the regularity on that, there's no set timeline on the state for that, so that one, we want to separate these and make it a little more subtle, twenty-twenty-five thirteen is the vacant building tax deduction, the maximum is two years, maximum of fifty percent of the gain that it would be here.
So council, that's what we'll look at doing first is twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen, is there a motion to reconsider resolution twenty-five thirteen on the same night it's been introduced? Got a motion by Councilman Abernathy, is there a second, second by Councilwoman Noon?
Does the motion include the maximum fifty percent, fifty percent of two years?
What?
Fifty percent of two years.
Motion by Councilman Abernathy, second by Councilwoman Noon.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen, a resolution in the Oud Common Council approving statement of benefits and granting vacant building tax deduction for D and D residential division.
Now council, we need a motion for unanimous consent to move forward with the possible passage of resolution twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen on the same night it's been introduced. Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Waters, is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Noon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign. Now council, we're looking for a motion to vote on resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen by roll call vote, please. Got a motion by Councilman Keelish.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abernathy and Councilman Waters, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign.
Abernathy?
Aye.
Everson?
Aye.
Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tyner?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Now we'll be looking, council, is resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen, so we need a motion to reconsider resolution twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen on the same night it's been introduced. Got a motion by Councilman Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Tyner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution in the Oud Common Council waiving noncompliance for certain requirements under IC six dash one, point one, dash twelve point one for D and D residential division LLC.
Now council, we need a motion for unanimous consent to move forward with the possible passage of resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen on the same night it's been introduced. Got a motion by Councilman Keelish.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Noon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed would be the same sign. Now council, we need a motion to vote on resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen by roll call vote, please. Got a motion by Councilman Waters, second by Councilman Abernathy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
Abernathy?
Aye.
Everson?
Aye.
Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tyner?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number six on the agenda this evening is the statement of benefits vacant building deduction, that's resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen.
The motion on that one can include the number of years up to ten and the percentage that you'd like to grant a vacant building deduction, and again, the standard one that we, that is commonly done, called the standard deduction, is a hundred percent, a ten percent falling over here.
Yes, this, this was actually for the real estate improvement, yes, a big one for real estate improvement, twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen. That's the one that had the typographical error.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen was the statement of benefits of the vacant building.
Fourteen was the waiver.
Fourteen was the waiver, thirteen was the vacant building.
Right.
Yes.
We're now on twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen.
That is correct.
Yes.
So council, we have a motion to reconsider resolution twenty-five dash fifteen on the same night it's been introduced.
That would be your statement of benefits, how you want to allow the deduction to take place, if you want it to be the standard deduction, it would be a hundred percent year one, ninety percent year two, and then.
Would it go ten years?
Yes, sir. Fifty-five.
And then change it to eight, if you give it to eight hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Council, any further questions? There's no question, we entertain a motion to reconsider resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen on the same night it's been introduced. Motion by Councilman Waters, is there a second? Second by Councilman Abernathy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution in the City of Oud Common Council approving statement of benefits and granting real property tax deductions for D and D residential division.
So now we need a motion for unanimous consent to move forward with the possible passage ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen. Got a motion by Councilman Waters, second by Councilman Keelish, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now we need a motion to vote on resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen, roll call vote. Which is by Councilman Keelish, Councilman Waters, second by Councilwoman Noon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abernathy?
Aye.
Everson?
Aye.
Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tyner?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
All right, thank you, council, moving down to number seven on the agenda this evening.
Did you verify you want to do ten years?
That is correct, yeah, the traditional.
Thank you, thanks, sir.
Thank you, thank you for your continued investment. So number seven on the agenda this evening is the public hearing on the annexations of Domino's Pizza, that being said, we need a motion to close the regular meeting to open the public hearing. Got a motion by Councilwoman Noon, is there, got a second by Councilman Waters, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Oh, I'm sorry, by Councilman Wright.
Mr. Savage, would you like to come forward with the representative of Domino's, please? Good evening.
Good evening, Kathy Vanas here from Ashton Surveyors, she's wanted to prepare all the paperwork, prepare for the annexation, and if you have any questions, she's, she's got the technical answers.
Council, do you have any questions regarding the Domino's Pizza and the location of where it would be on State Route twenty-eight?
Where?
Yeah, where is?
I can't read the surveyors. Where is it at?
So it is the property directly to the east of Happy Burger, that was, yeah, previously owned by Joe Miller, and there you go, she is, Domino's has came in and acquired that property, and it's currently not in city property, so they are asking to be annexed.
Super voluntary annexation, and before we get started on the annexation, if you have any questions on that, the investment, the total investment on the land and equipment was one million seventy thousand dollars for Domino's.
I also have an email from the franchisee giving over the history of the couple who are currently, this will be their thirteenth building, their thirteenth franchise, and they have several awards that they have in their repertoire, the twenty-fifteen National General Manager, they built, beat out six thousand five hundred other managers nationwide, but other than this, they, they are really excited about trying to get into.
They built, beat out six thousand five hundred other managers nationwide. But, uh, other than this, they, they are really excited about trying to get into the Elwood area, so.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
So where else are they asking me? What, what other cities?
They are right now, tonight, at least, they're not here. They have a Winchester store that's opening up. They have, um, they're showing me the first two were in southern Indiana. Um, they are from the, um, Cincinnati area, or that area, and they're moving this way. But I have Winchester and I have, um, the others are, all seem to be, um, smaller cities and not, they found that the ones in Indianapolis don't serve, that they don't work as well. So they tried to bring it a little bit further.
And then are they, you know, involved with any other franchisees?
They're strictly Domino's.
Is there any other public comment regarding the Domino's annexation?
Well, the, um, one of the things that I do know, there are several things that we have to make sure that we qualify for to be able to annex. And one of them is it has to be contiguous with the city limits. It is contiguous on the far east side, which is the west side, uh, what is, it's RG, which is Red Gold, um, the transportation area. Uh, we did make sure that they, this parcel does have access across the street is water, city water, or, and there is, that is also, you know, a part of your property. But also, um, city sewer, that is a piece that has been given to what would have been Happy Burger at the time. It does cross this subject property and goes to the east. So they do have sewer. Um, but again, we did make sure that we fit all the criteria before we brought it before you to make sure that you were applying to the N F S's cover.
And Kristi Basyan has been working with them on the utilities and communicating back and forth.
Uh, based on her expectations and attributes and et cetera, what, roughly when, how might it rule?
Is that the end?
When, when might it open?
Oh, I don't know because this has caused, they have a severe delay in their overall, um, they thought it would be, they thought it was already annexed in the city of Elwood before they, uh, and they were ready to start hiring people to, like, do the site plan that we did. But also start putting the shovel to it there. And we've got a couple of months delay. And she is a little concerned because they have, um, incentives within Domino's. They're going to be losing an incentive if I can't push this through a little bit. And I'm going to tell you that, um, I know member first, that is their incentive date, and once they want to start digging. So we are trying to push to be able to get through by the end of the year. I know I'm in September and send before you now going, I know we're going to make it, but I'm telling you, that's your goal.
All right, if there's no, uh, further public comment, we're going to take a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the re- regular scheduled city council meeting. Got a motion by councilwoman Noon, second by councilman Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. So if council in front of you this evening is resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, is there a motion to reconsider on the same night it's been introduced?
Second.
Got a motion by councilwoman Noon, sorry, period, second was, uh, councilman Abernathy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, a resolution establishing and adopting a fiscal plan for property proposed annexation.
Counsel, we need a motion for unanimous consent to move forward with the possible passage of resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen on the same night it's been introduced.
Second.
Got a motion by councilman Keelish, second by councilman Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now we need a motion to vote on resolution number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen by roll call vote, please. Motion by councilman Wright, second by councilwoman Noon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abernathy?
Everson? Aye.
Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tyner?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Right.
So council, what you approved was the, uh, fiscal plan. Now we're looking at the actual ordinance of annexation of the adjacent territory. So that is going to be under ordinance number twenty-four ninety-five. Is there a motion to reconsider ordinance number twenty-four ninety-five on the same night it's been introduced?
Mayor Jones, to, owing to state law, we cannot adopt that ordinance to fourteen days from today. Okay, so introduction only, okay, for that today.
Very good. Well, this one will be introduction, and then fourteen days from today we get adopted, um, legally. So what we're doing now is we just need a motion to read ordinance number twenty-four ninety-five.
It's a fourteen, uh, doesn't have to be exactly fourteen, but at least fourteen days is what the state law says.
Well, that requires especially years.
It could.
And we'll probably set that this evening before we adjourn, just so everybody's on the same page. So... Yeah, a motion to read, all right. Yeah, a motion by councilman Abernathy, second by councilman Keelish. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance number twenty-four ninety-five and order the annexing adjacent territory.
Number ten on the agenda this evening is the public hearing on the twenty twenty-six budget. So we need a motion to close the regular scheduled meeting and open the public hearing. Got a motion by councilwoman Noon, second by councilman Abernathy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The public hearing on the twenty twenty-six budget is officially opened. I would like to read a statement to the council. You've got a man of work, I will let you talk about the budget. So tonight we present to you a budget that reflects both our financial discipline and our community values. It's a budget that meets the demands of our city even in the face of new fiscal challenges. As many of you are aware, the passage of Senate Bill One has resulted in a significant reduction in our general fund revenues to the tune of three hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's not a small number, and it's not a reduction that we take lightly. It's the kind of budgetary impact that in many cities would trigger across-the-board cuts, especially with jobs and essential services. But I stand here to tell you that not a single city job will be cut under this budget that we're proposing. We've made tough choices. We've tightened in some areas. We've diverted nonsense of spending in others. And we're looking for efficiencies wherever they can be found. But through it all, we prioritize the people who make this city run, our public employees, our service workers, our maintenance crews, and our administrative staff. Because at the end of the day, this budget's just not about numbers on the page. It's a statement of values. The budget is a bridge. It's not the finish line. It keeps us strong today, but we must continue to be fighting for a tomorrow where no family feels like they're just barely getting by in a city that they've helped build. Want to thank our financial advisors, Madam Clerk Treasure, our budget committee, and our department heads. Who have all contributed to make this the most difficult but successful budget that we passed. It's not perfect. But it's honest. It's balanced, and it keeps our city working for everyone. So, thank you. Floor is open for discussion. Madam Clerk, would you like to add anything?
No, that's great. Um, I mean, yeah, I pretty much was going to say that same stuff, though. I just, the budget is balanced, um, as long as they know weird things with the state. I mean, this is, this has been hard because it's just been so new. But we are way ahead of some other people, and there's been some, uh, I don't know, I feel like almost some towns and cities are, I mean, the, the depressing news and everything that I keep, you know, I keep seeing, or I'll see it on the news, in the newspapers, Facebook, whatever. And there's a lot of people that are facing a lot harder decisions than we are. Um, so I'm glad that we were in, you know, a, a good stance in the first place. Because it just, each year, you know, there's, there's decisions that have to be made, and, um, I'm glad that we're not as in that depressing situations like some people are.
I, I think Senate Bill One will be tweaked. Um, if, if you're seeing what municipalities are saying, um, AIM's got individuals meeting with the mayor, state legislature, as we speak, uh, there's a meeting just, uh, this past week. You know, we're partners of what they call Syracuse, the Central and the Interregional Development Authority, and, and we're at a table with Fishers, we're at a table with Noblesville, we're at a table with Indianapolis, we're at a table with Westville, Scienceville. And they're all saying the same thing, and we're all speaking the same common language that we understand that there needed to be some adjustments to the property tax caps and the circuit breakers. And what SB One is doing is it's helping try to circumvent circuit breakers. Because in the past four years, the city of Elwood has lost one million dollars because of property tax caps and circuit breakers. With that being said, Senate Bill One, it does help senior citizens, and that's very important, and it does help our veterans, which is important also. But it is going to penalize working-class families, and that's the discussion that we've been talking about day in and day out with our AIM representatives from the, the boards that we sent on to our state legislature. And that they understand that this isn't the perfect bill. Moving forward, we just need to tweak and we just need to adjust. You know, last year, we, we brought a budget to you guys that I think had two percent growth, maybe three, and it came back to this ten percent. So we had to file on a pill with the state board or the DLGF to, uh, capture what we were going to lose. And if the same thing would happen this year, where we're very conservative on, on the two, three percent, we don't know what is going to come in on this tax draw. But if it comes into a significant number, the tire of the money budgeted, we're going to go back to the table and say, we're fiscally responsible, we're conservative on, conservative on these budgets. We cut everything that we knew to cut to continue to provide the essential services that our residents deserve.
And I want public or department heads and staff to know, um, we've had, you know, different meetings, um, talks, the council has been involved. We've had, um, two meetings where we all got together and kind of went over it, and, uh, there's been other people that have had other calls and stuff. So I don't want you guys to think they just received this. They have definitely been looking at this and throwing out ideas and different things. So, thank you guys for having those meetings. We usually only have a budget committee, which is two people, but this was a lot more.
And in the past ten years, uh, we're in budgets with you, this is definitely not what we're used to. Because every year prior to this one, we were used to growth. We were expecting to see higher numbers. Um, there was an article today on one of the news stations about beach growth, and, and they believe that they will be extinct within two to three years. That's a municipality of over thirteen thousand people that, uh, let their fire service go to, I have Indianapolis Fire, so now they're not eligible for a lot of the lit tax. Their mayor is in, uh, definitely a bad situation right now, and what they're going to do, because they don't have the revenue or the funding to bring back the fire department to be eligible for the lit tax. But the city of Indianapolis has captured it all while they're providing fire service to them. So there's municipalities across the board. We're fortunate enough to have Reed, who's been with many of you guys for as long as I've been the mayor, and they are, uh, at every summit, they're at every conference, and, uh, they're talking about a lot of different things, uh, in anticipation of this. So, so we were ready, um, and, and it's not as drastic as what some of the other communities here are experiencing. Are there any questions? Anyone want to come forward for public comment? All right, council, is there a motion to close the public hearing and open the regular scheduled meeting for city council on Monday, September eighth? Got a motion by councilman Waters, second by councilman Abernathy. All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. But council, one thing I do want to say about this budget, you know, in the whole process, it's, it's just not the city of Elwood. You know, it's affecting the schools, it's affecting the county, it's affecting the townships, it affects the library, all of the taxing entities are affected by Senate Bill One. You know, it sounded great at the state level that they were going to reduce property tax caps, they were going to reduce property taxes in general. For, for regular folks who are looking at three hundred dollars, where municipalities are going to be in a position where they have to make, make changes. That's going to be more than three hundred dollars that you're saving just on your property taxes. So there's a lot of people digging in their heels, back on their heels, knowing that Senate Bill One's not great. It definitely needs to be tweaked, and it, it's came down all the way from the governor's office, said, hey, municipalities, you have to be getting very creative to look at funding. Um, we, we've got calls from other municipalities saying, you know, how are you going to do this? What are you going to do this? You know, what, what's your suggestions? And everybody's in the same boat, but what we need to care about today is this city, this school corporation, and the taxing entities that are in here. Counsel, open it up. We're in another, talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, I've got something I'd like to say. As president of the Elwood City Council, I'd like to amend the twenty twenty-six City of Elwood budget and remove any and all raises in the twenty twenty-six budget and revert those salaries back to the twenty twenty-five budget to be paid in the twenty twenty-six budget. I'd like a roll call vote of the city council.
We're still, we're still in the public hearing portion. That, that can certainly be done once the public, I'd recommend that votes occur outside the public hearing.
Yeah, it's been, it's closed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I should wait up. Sorry, John.
So is there a motion to consider councilman Wright's suggestion?
Can I make public, if comments?
Yeah, you can make a comment, yeah.
I just have some questions regarding some of the salaries. So I know we did meet and, and some of this was discussed, but after that I had some more time to think. So are these three or four, um, employees, are they tax exemption employees?
Yes, they are. Like, not tax exempt, but, uh...
I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, overtime is...
Overtime, I'm fine. I wish I was tax exempt, too.
Yeah, overtime is, because they're appointed by the, uh, elected officials, and they're the right-hand people to run those offices.
So do they flex hours and stuff when they work additional hours, or like how?
Currently, uh, they're able to take time back during the period, but most of those employees do not because they're on clock twenty-four seven. They're, they're...
You're earning a week, not a pay grade.
Correct.
And then, I know you guys had stated in our meeting previously that this was to, you know, address the wage gaps and, and whatnot. So what's the structure moving forward that we're gonna look at to ensure that other employees in the office wage gaps are addressed? Because I know there's several other, you know, clerks and, and whatnot that are very, you know, low on the scale as well, and, and hard to make ends meet. So I just wonder how this will affect the morale of other employees.
Madam Clerk, do you want to?
Like, you're asking me? Like, what I think, or like, what, like, what do you mean? Well, I mean, in the future, how are we going to address these wage gaps that we're talking, I mean... Well, I guess to say these four, like, because I've had people contact me, as I'm sure other people in this council have, and there are some people that are not happy about four, only four people getting increases when others are not. Especially like we've stated in this meeting, you know, the entire time, how we're losing money, we're unsure of our future. Um, we're asking other departments and boards to cut budgets or cut where they can. So... So, I guess some feel like they are more valued than others. So I want to make sure that we're continuing, these other employees know that they're valued in the, in the future, next year, five years, whatever, like, we're going to look at, you know, all the clerks across the board or we're going to look at, you know, department by department, like, who's to say next year the, you know, the water department or the, the, um, probably the police department, but the, uh, you know, the court comes and says, you know, hey, I think my girls deserve, you know, higher pay.
And he, and Kyle has done that before.
No, I know.
We just gave it to those court girls. Um, as, as of the morale or the wage gap thing, my thought on this was more not, it, it's the wage gap of job duties. And, um, so do I look at the other clerks and think they're underpaid? Absolutely. Um, but do I look at the other four people who are right below? That have to be bonded, that have to, you know, they either have employees or they do everything for all the departments. You know, all the different things that we had, like, discussed versus the other people on those, um, different, uh, job descriptions. But, um, as of like the other clerks not making as much, that would just be a full-blown, um, raise. Not really like the wage gap thing, so.
So what we're seeing for the past nine years, we were able to give raises to everyone. Unfortunately, this year, we were not able to do that. These four positions are positions whose jobs have changed tremendously over the years. There are the right hands of the elected officials, whether it's from Al's office, whether it's from my office, whether it's running the utility office, or whether it's running the court system. Those individuals are the ones that keep the day-to-day operations running. For instance, my office, the clerk treasurer's office are responsible for twelve departments. Not only are they responsible for twelve departments throughout the city, they're also the main line of communication for most of the entities and boards that are in the city for different things, whether it's redevelopment commission, whether it's building, whether it's planning, whether it's, uh, police, whether it's fire. All of those individuals handle confidential information that is coming from twelve departments and just not one.
I guess on the, like, morale thing, it, it's, like, morale slash wage gap thing is, I guess my thought on this was the wage gap of job descriptions of that whole pool, like, a pool of people. So, I think the next pool of people that is extremely important is like the CDL people. So that's not just util, like, that's utility water street. Like, those people, there has to be something done, which I think what we're going to end up doing is actually have one single person that actually is the, um, trainer. And so people don't have to go and spend seven thousand dollars on their own and then come work for the city and only make twenty-one dollars. Like, it's, that's just, or they make twenty-one dollars and the guy next to them that doesn't, you know, have to go through ASME drug screenings and evaluations on their DMV report as a person next to them that makes the same amount, just because they're not using it. So that's one thing I definitely, I, I think there's a lot of, I don't, I don't think there's as many wage gaps. Everybody doesn't get paid enough.
Right, right.
So I, I hope that wasn't, or they don't feel like that. I mean, I feel like I could vote anybody.
I mean, I think everyone on this council, I think I could speak for everyone on this council, that everyone agrees that nobody in government thinks enough money. Nobody, I mean, everyone here wants to give everyone a raise. That's why obviously there's been so much discussion about this. But again, going back to our meetings, going back to this meeting, I think that's where some of the uncertainty is, is that we are uncertain of our future. We're talking, I mean, in the meeting, you know, that we held outside of this meeting, yes, it's been said that we weren't doing, uh, you know, a wheel tax, but there's discussion for next year having wheel, like, we're going to have to implement additional taxes. You know, we're borrowing from the ERC for the first time. Not to mention, I know it's been talked in the ERC that, uh, you know, funding of public safety and stuff like that. So I just, that is my only concern, is that with approaching the uncertain times we have, is this the right time for implementing these increases?
So the way that the, uh, legislation worked for ERC and TIP funding is now they allow that to fund public safety to offset some of the impact that was made by Senate Bill One. Um, so we, we have reached in and used the ERC to help with police and fire. And it's something that, this budget here isn't raising people's taxes. It is a balanced budget. It was carefully thought out. It, it makes sense in the world that I, I come in and my clerk is confident in and our financial advisors were confident in. So now it's up to the council.
Is there any, um, is there any, uh, edits that we can make? Like, you know, as I stated in the meeting before, like, my concern is that, you know, not everyone's people leaders and there's people getting the same percentage as non-people leaders and.
So the first motion that we have on the floor is by Councilman Wright to revert back to the 2025 budget for salaries, as Al was worried. The motion that you made was to revert back to 2025 salaries. So there, Councilman Wright is looking for a motion to do that. Councilman?
Okay, so the, you're wanting on the budget to decrease the balanced budget right now?
Which makes absolutely no sense. So you can pass, this was explained to you, that you can pass the budget as presented and then pass a different salary ordinance when that time comes. All you're doing now is taking money away. You know, I sent you a text two different times, asked to meet, we were going to talk to you, and you didn't respond.
Well, you know what it really did to me is, not once did you ever contact me or she ever contacted me that you were having meetings. I don't think Dave Abernathy either. We were on that committee. I talked to Mark Sullivan, he said he was never asked any of it.
Were you not in a meeting for the budget committee? That Sullivan and Chief Brison had sat in, that we presented for the past nine years, just like the same budget?
The only meeting we had is when we had three.
What, was Chief Sullivan and Chief Brison not in there?
No, because we decided that. You even said, because since their, their budgets weren't changing, then they don't have to be there.
I was hoping we would have had a budget meeting with the budget people.
So instead of those two budget meetings, we had, instead of two councils, then we had all seven come. And then you had said that their, their salaries weren't, or their budgets weren't, they were flat, saying.
Police and fire didn't change, and they were going to comfortable with that.
And I told you then, at the meeting, I was not voting for this budget. And I'm still not voting for it, so.
Thank you.
Can I have a question on editing?
Yeah, well, I know he's making the motion to revert back, but.
So, like, what I talked about in that email, like, are you talking about like how to edit? So, you, you can pass, say, a, a budget that's, in a general budget, there's going to be five dollars, okay? And your salary is five dollars, okay? But say the council says, no, they're not going to be five dollars, it's going to be four dollars. You guys can pass the budget how it is. On January first, you can transfer that one dollar where you guys want. So, like, my recommendation to you is if that is the route you guys want to go, do not shorten the budget. Pass the budget, do not pass the salary ordinances. You can, that's where you can edit. So then, like, if you, and I can't pay, say you guys pass two dollars, but in the budget it's five dollars, I can't pay them five dollars. You guys have to pass the salary ordinances. The salary ordinances is what pays those people. So, I have had, example, contract police department, I was supposed to pay them at one point, I don't know, six thousand dollars on, maybe it was clothing or something. But you guys passed on that clothing ordinance, I think it was sixteen hundred. So I only paid them sixteen hundred, even though that line, like, said that the border works wanted it. So my recommendation is that, and then, remember, remember this can only be first reading, so you cannot pass it tonight or on the salary ordinances. Is to not reduce the budget, is to actually, um, change what you guys can edit, you know, is, is that, is that kind of what you were asking?
Yeah, so, yeah. So, so John, you're, are you okay, are you okay with the budget, just not the salaries? The salary to this?
That's what I thought.
Okay.
So the first, that twenty-four ninety, you can just do the first reading. And, um, well, you mean the first readings on everything and then, you know, the edit things can be done on the salary ordinances.
Well, if you do that and then reduce the salary ordinance, where does that, you, you've appropriated a dollar amount and now you're approving less. So what happens to that money?
You can tell me to do a transfer. On January one and say, we, we've discussed, we don't want those raises. We want it to go to my tree. So you put a tree in that line item by, by doing that. Does that make sense? I'm trying to explain it, it's so hard to explain. Yeah. So, yeah.
So we previously had Mr. Wright's motion. If there's no second to that, we will move on. Hearing no second, we'll move on to ordinance number twenty-four ninety, the 2026 budget, first reading. Is there a motion to read and consider?
Motion.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Waters, second by Councilwoman Ederson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we'll see the same sign.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-four ninety, 2026 budget. Okay, so then.
So we'll move on down to the agenda this evening, and that's ordinance number twenty-four ninety-one. That's the utility salary ordinance, this is first reading only as well, not getting passed the first night. Is there a motion to read and consider the ordinance number twenty-four ninety-one on the same night it's been introduced? Got a motion by Councilwoman Noon, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Councilwoman Waters, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
An ordinance fixing the bi-weekly and hourly compensation of certain employees of the Elwood Utilities Madison County, Indiana.
Moving down the agenda to ordinance number twenty-four ninety-two. This is the city salary ordinance, first reading only, non-passable. Is there a motion to read? Got a motion by Councilman Abernathy, is there a second? By Councilman Keelich, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance number twenty-four ninety-two, an ordinance fixing the bi-weekly and hourly compensation of certain employees of the Elwood Civil City, Madison County, Indiana, and the TAC bigs era.
Moving down the agenda to ordinance number twenty-four ninety-three. This is the elected salary ordinance, this is the first reading. No motion to approve tonight. So is there a motion to read, ordinance number twenty-four ninety-three?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Noon, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Councilman Keelich, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we'll see the same sign.
Ordinance number twenty-four ninety-three, an ordinance fixing the bi-weekly and monthly salaries of elected officials in Elwood Civil City, Madison County, Indiana.
All right, number fifteen on the agenda, the minutes from the city council meeting on August fourth, 2025. Council, if there are no amendments or corrections to these minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Councilman Walker, second by Councilman Abernathy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance number twenty-four ninety-four is an additional appropriation. Madam, third?
Okay, um, this is an additional appropriation for, um, a few different line items. For, um, the fire, shift premiums, special we pay, that's from Duck Creek. Demo unsafe buildings, those were from payments of residents on their buildings. Police department equipment, that is their SRO money that we put there. And that money can also, um, we sometimes do not spend that and you guys appropriate it like at the beginning of the following year. Opioid unrestricted supplies. Then park pool supplies. And then we have park water and park other services. And I want to, um, say a few things about that, since we are talking about the budget now, would be a good time. Sheila's in here, so, um, those adjustments and additionals are actually revenue that they brought in. We do not have the final yet, because nine-one, we were just wrapping up and everything. But their revenue, um, to replace what they went negative, covered it. So it did, you know, I was saying, it said it in the meetings, but we were completely done with the park debt. So those, um, that's great news. We actually have six thousand in the donation fund. So that is where the start of the pool next year, they won't automatically go negative. So, the park budget, what you guys budgeted and approved was what they, um, you know, had requested for the pool. It worked this year for the pool, we hope next year, it runs the same way, but, but better. And, um, so I want to, you know, explain that, that to you guys, is that everything that they, you know, concession stands, it did come back, so.
And I will be remiss, but it, Madam, third pointed out, Sheila, I just want to say thank you. Sheila is a volunteer unpaid for Park Board. She's our Park Board president, and she was out at that pool every single day. And she, it probably aged you by thirty years.
And I'm.
But i- if it wouldn't have been for you, just helping communicate, making sure everything, because this was uncharted waters for us, and first time that we had done it, uh, where the city played paid employees and, uh, society of the mayor, we always contracted out. And, you know, I drive by all hours of the day, all hours of the evening, and Sheila's out there, so. I just want to say thank you. Uh, you were a major part of the success of what we experienced there. And, uh, first year we added our belt, and we're going to continue to grow it. So again, thank you for everything you did.
Thank you, it was me, Madam, third.
All right, so I have a question. Thirty-nine one eighty-six, you were saying that the pool took in additional revenue and hadn't been appropriated before, but now it was a rock, right? So where did the thirty-three thousand and the eleven thousand come from up above?
Okay, so the thirty-three thousand, it came from, the payment came from Duck Creek, then the unsafe building demos, the visas revenue that Sheila's brought in, and then the SRO check, those total the thirty-three thousand three hundred.
What's next on?
So that's school resource officers. The school, the school cuts us a check every year to, uh, have, have a police officer on site. The eleven thousand that you're referencing, uh, comes from opioid unrestricted funds. So there's, uh, when the opioid supplement comes, there's a certain dollar amount can be used for restricted, there are services, uh, whether it's counseling, whether it's, uh, in Arcane, whatever it may be. And then there's a portion of that that comes out as unrestricted, that can be set on anything.
All right, thank you.
And that's another fund that we do not use it, um, like the animal shelter, they don't use it. And you guys appropriated it again for, to, for the TNR program. So it's, it keeps going, but you have to appropriate it or you can't spend it. Um, so then the thirty-nine thousand one eighty-six, that's from the pool revenue. So those are the additionals that we have at this time.
There are no questions regarding the ordinance twenty-four ninety-four. We entertain a motion to read and consider on the same night it's been introduced. Got a motion by Councilwoman Noon, second by Councilman Abernathy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Additional appropriation, ordinance number twenty-four ninety-four.
Now, council, we need a motion bringing animal consent to approve ordinance number twenty-four ninety-four on the same night it's been introduced.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Keelich, second by Councilman Waters, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Now we need a motion to vote on ordinance number twenty-four ninety-four by roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Motion by Councilman Waters, second. Motion by Councilwoman Waters, second by Councilwoman Noon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abernathy?
Aye.
Everson? Aye. Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tyner?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Now, Council, we're looking at resolution twenty-two-five dash twelve, approval of wastewater phase three reimbursement. The wastewater slash E R C expenses before the bond will be paid. Madam Clerk?
Uh, we've had to do this, I believe, with everybody here on the reimbursement of the G O bond. So it's like items that are purchased prior to the actual bond coming through. The E R C is paying for those expenses. But this is just saying that the, um, that the bond money will reimburse those. I got in a panic today because I remember with the G O bond, um, we ended up having to purchase some things and find ways to pay it because we, by the time we passed the reimbursement, there's like a gap of thirty days, so I, there's been a, um, two-month gap since we've passed it, and so anyway, I called, uh, Mr. Pittman today. Soft costs are reimbursable, now if he would have, if the E R C would have bought like, say, eight for the wastewater plant, this would not work, so I called today because I had a panic, but if soft costs, those aren't reimbursable. So this is for wastewater that the E R C is paying for, when we get the bonds, I will pay them back.
Seems like this number has floated to three or four documents.
What, the nine point five? Yeah, and it's not even nine point five?
Yeah, well, I'm just curious as to how many times we're gonna approve to spend nine, maybe five hundred thousand.
Well, now we're reimbursing it, they're so picky on these. But it's, I, I really thought, oh my gosh, there's, I, I, I freaked out, but.
So Council, resolution twenty-two-five dash twelve, is there a motion to read and consider?
No.
Got a motion by Councilman Abernathy, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Councilwoman Waters, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash twelve, a resolution of the City of Elwood, Indiana declaring an official intent to reimburse expectations.
Council, is there a motion for unanimous consent to move forward with the possible passage of resolution number twenty-two-five dash twelve on the same night it's been introduced?
Same.
Motion by Councilwoman Waters, second by Councilwoman Abernathy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now we need a motion to vote on resolution twenty-two-five dash twelve. By roll call voters. Got a motion by Councilman Abernathy, second by Councilwoman Noon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abernathy?
Aye.
Everson? Aye. Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tyner?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Number eighteen on the agenda, Council, who is with the one minute nine. It is, uh, resolution twenty-two-five dash eleven, uh, Madam Clerk?
Um, okay, so contractual services, overtime, um, for Jason and the police department, um, has been, um, a lot this year. Out of their hands, we had two in, um, Academy, and then we have one on Trinity League. Uh, so Jason and I have met and discussed where he thought, um, he can move some money for overtime, and that was from this contractual service line. So that's the first trans- transfer, so that's police department contractual to, um, their overtime, and then mayor's expense, one thirty-seven of seven hundred fifty dollars to, uh, office supplies, two thirteen for seven hundred fifty dollars. Uh, the judge, mayor, myself, we have this expense line, and we went back for uh, way past me, and nobody ever uses them, I don't, I think it's a maybe a tr- like, we have mileage, we have, I think Prior used to have to go out on there, like W two, so it was a one hundred. Anyway, you haven't used it forever, uh, the judge and myself, we don't use it either, but we should move it.
Any questions, Madam Clerk? No questions, we did. Motion to read and consider resolution twenty-two-five dash eleven.
Okay.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Noon, second by Councilwoman Keelish, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash eleven, a resolution authorizing the court transfer clerk treasurer of the City of Elwood to transfer funds within months.
We have a motion for unanimous consent to move forward with the possible passage of ordinance number twenty-two, excuse me, resolution twenty-two-five dash eleven on the same night it's been introduced. Motion by Councilwoman Abernathy, second by Councilwoman Keelish, vice versa, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Now we just need a motion to vote on resolution number twenty-two-five dash eleven by roll call voters.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Keelish, second by Councilwoman Waters, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abernathy?
Aye.
Everson? Keelish?
Aye.
Noon? Tyner?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Right.
Moving down for the next meeting in old business, is that correct, Madam Clerk, is that what we need to be? Council, we need your request to the board with that. So the next thing would be next meeting in old business?
Um, yes, the the mowing of properties, the campers, well, yeah, we'll deal with that next.
Okay. Well, board, this does wrap up the agenda for the common council from Monday, September eighth at six thirty.
Do we need to schedule a special meeting?
Good call. Yes. We said fourteen days, right?
At least, at minimum, wasn't it?
So where's that put us at?
Like twenty-two?
Yeah, September twenty-second, twenty-third, a Monday or Tuesday. Council, do you have a recommendation on that?
I don't have time, I don't, or not, I'm with her.
Okay, is everyone good for the twenty-second?
Yeah, can we do it earlier?
Yeah.
Is it five thirty too early for?
No, that's good. Twenty-third, whatever.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, very, that is not for the park board meeting.
Oh, okay.
What time is it meeting? Oh, well.
I'll just have the scene done for you.
We could even, I could even do, well, we can even. What time is the earliest you could be here?
The earliest I could be, you don't serve.
Cause you're fine with it. We could always do it earlier, too.
No.
No, it's Tuesdays, Thursday.
What, how can you meet that early?
I wouldn't.
Sammy, do you want this part?
It's only nice of you.
I know, well, yeah, I gotta. Sam. What time is the whole?
Oh, six thirty, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do you want to?
Yeah, five thirty.
Five?
Five. Five. We married at five.
Five o'clock on the twenty-second.
Okay.
I will, send out the reminder, it's not scheduled.
And then Jeff will take care of the public noticing on that. Mr. Savage, you'll communicate with, uh, the Domino's representatives?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, Council, that does wrap up the agenda for September eighth. City council meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Waters and a second by Councilwoman Keelish, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
Yes, don't leave, I have two documents that you guys all have to sign out. I don't know about this. Oh, that's just a sticky note, I mean. Oh, that, no, I don't know, that's not me. Yeah, I think Sam had them.
Oh, I was a scratch hole, I'm just, it's over that ass. I'm a scratch hole, that's more.
Back in the day, it means roll, didn't like, yeah, Mike Summers.
Yeah.
Freddie Alberts, yeah.
Okay, wait, you thought we were going to talk about it?
Seth Young.
Okay.
All right, everybody, good evening.
Yep.
How's your day? The best, we're playing.
Thank you.
Ken Gray, probably get some.
Great team, yeah. Yeah, cause his mom was the, well, the coaches. Yeah, her, uh, uh.
Soup. That's their life, trying to take us to, yeah.
Hey, look at my dad, she's got kids, she's got two kids.
John? John, are we gonna meet next week?
John.
Are we gonna meet next week?
Do what?
We are going to meet next week.
Are you guys gonna meet next week, John? Whenever.
Okay.
That's it, whenever.
Okay.
Meet during the day?
Yeah. I'm off this Wednesday and Friday. I, I'm not working Wednesday and Friday, this week. I saw Paul's house, so I got that, I got that. Yeah.
Call, enthusiastic they are about it or whatever, but.
And I can't even remember who said something to me, I feel like it was someone who was over at what, I didn't know what it was.
I'm sure.
But I was like, I don't want it, I will pass it on, because I had it.
Yeah, yeah. So what's the story?
So Jeff, well, I had seen Jeff multiple times and he didn't answer me on multiple things. And I was kind of prepared tonight when I, I had a feeling it would be to show up and have somebody to talk to. All right, I'll see you next week.